We are Chinese, some Chinese. And I have the message that President they are detaining it. They are very important. And that is our job. As the voters and with speaking on the last five states, a many, very clear children here. And state, state, state. And we are not ashamed. And then finally, I tell the president, very hardworking, very strong president of the Black Party of India. Like I said in the afternoon, it's very difficult for you to be a leader with very great way of taking a decision. Our dear president did not look at self-worth, the implications and the convenience of the status before he took a decision, very bold decision, going in great time, then they should be free. It's not easy, it's easy. Most people think it's a easy thing to get into power. And remember one day when the political function and somebody said that John McEnroe is two-spiritual man, very, very spiritual. Fortunately, to become a president of India, see also very spiritual. Who am these that hate me? But to know means that love is God. And what I'm like, he will change me. And that is only ten that is making him succeed as a succeeding ambassador. Tonight, I'm not going to speak much about politics, why not? Only because you don't have a bad mind. As the chief, he made a mistake in India. Our job is to stick to government that we choose. And I said I'm not going to learn much about politics because Mr. President has to be. And there's no other way I can play him back or have talks. Or I can show him that I have strength and capacity. Only because you're pretty handy there to talk, to talk. When time comes, when time comes, we will see those that are making that statement obsession. You are very knowledgeable. So, President Minister, we are here to see how we are dealing with infrastructure, humanitarian agreements, our soul and self-worth. And it was very, 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 very sad. And I'm very worried about this. I had expected you to be in this space for about this three months and a half. For about two or three days. So that when you leave that place, you compare to the last place. And like I said, there's something where I'm defending nothing from the beginning, from the first executive to the very, very modern leadership. And I told you today that I'm not going to let them that there are more of those that talk about and do the very standing like a second and speaking both my heart and my chin from the first executive government. So that's next me to get into a very big shoe, very large shoe which are finding with clothes aware of the support of Mr. President. And doing so many things and moving with so many inside zoom and spirits, very high spirits to surpass those leaders. It is a high responsibility as anyone who has that with this great opportunity and power and authority at this moment to show military that I've been a leader. We keep other political parties in this space not with war, law, struggle, law, fight, but with win. And go on, let's go. All other political parties here in the West and West in this space. Look at my reflection of identifying themselves as if they love the people, though. We give them people the opportunity. We are not fighting anybody. And I'm not seeing anybody fighting myself. So everyone is one man. And we are very supportive and happy to be that not because we are a single man, not because we are a single man, but because I did that decision not to look at our own top management. They decided to do that. And I find it serious. Moving forward with very great a size zoom and two more chair. Let me just use this one, mathematical. Mathematical. Okay, then we just can. So that nobody will say I'm failing. So since here, I'm not the president. We are very grateful for our dear president. We are being well-intended for infrastructure development. This is all this space. In this nation, and I have found it sad that that all the government and how it started with the local government is one will make sure they look in the government that why do they do that? So that people come here. We said, "No, oh yes, he's ongoing." In a very good government, let me start there. The time the first one was started. From style of the road reduction that Gashi wrote, only Gashi and wrote. And down to probably five kilometers is 26 kilometers. Now, that's what we built it with 80 kilometers per minute. And now, now, so putting Ashar in front of it because that is the way to design. After the four states, there's a good Ashar. Ashar have gone very far, if they lost, come to 24 kilometers, they're still giving and allowing kilometers. We're taking it step by step. But I'm sure by Christmas, they'll matter completed it, we're Ashar. Now, the same one that we started in the very good government is people go to the road. And I'll tell you much more to you, sir. People go to the road was a great leader in this space. During the the let me just say those that came to investigate us and kill us, let me put it short by that. He said, "I arrested him" and killed him about five days. So about one road, not five days, I think about two or one road. Because it was killed in 1959. I report the first being the nation of our own. So before our independence, they killed him before their arrival of rain. So that I tell the government to hurry. They arrested him because he molested most of the white and he was killed. I said, "Still, the person who back this is who this is better and pardon him." That we have. So that road is about 12.8 kilometers. And it's ongoing in the very good government with Terespan Bridge. It's also a dark bridge. That bridge is also ongoing. I paid 100% on the bridge, but also paid 100% on the road. We're not paying the contractor for that bridge. Then again, in the same very good government we have Rwanda to Domo King 32 kilometers. We have also paid the contractor 100%. In the same very good government we have Rwanda, Domo King 63.8 kilometers. In the same very good government the project is ongoing. That truck, the Rwanda, about 100 kilometers was just normalized. In the same very good government that Rwanda, Domo King has a first part bridge which are paid 100%. Now, in that 6 kilometers style of the very good government first part bridge, I believe the first first part bridge of 10 kilometers just so long for you. And I paid 100%. In the same very good government we have the general husband to Domo King 12.2 kilometers. We have just awarded a job. But there's a bridge, Terespan Bridge, ongoing which are paid 100%. And the contractor is there in the same very good government. Now, outside this road, I mentioned all the national class in the very good government is a 100 kilometer bridge. And that's about 60% of fiction we are not taking care of in the good government. And so that back to easy local government in the very good. In easy local government we have Gofrebe to go 11.2 kilometers that we have presented. We have Gofrebe to every white who's not cheap going to block out the way people may to allow the local 100% 22 kilometers that we are monitoring by 50% and the job one at 50%. 10%, 10%. Why the many kilometers are 10, that is 15%. So it's wrong for you. Was to complete the bridge to span bridge and not that for a long. Now, in the same easy local government from Bajungwa to Yizhogo is 23 kilometers. Now, at the same of Yizhogo, we have the hill in that place. So another many places are on tracks in that market. So anytime the fairytale starts that fairytale will do a good because they're definitely one or two of that. Because the great definitely will not catch that. And what we teach is to bring it down, bring the river down dig down and let it forget which you can see that which just in a five year the ditch that which so what they are doing now is unfortunate which is almost 80% done. Because I wanted you to visit all these places. Now, the same in the easy local government we have Amos at the down to is busting down to the approach in the valley at this third point 8 kilometers. It's ongoing. The same in the easy local government we have rural up also 3 kilometers and we value it to 10. 8.5 kilometers at the 30 road. Then 6.3 kilometers at Upikeloukishu. And I know another one is in the Wambu. That's just so long for you. I had issued a contract, the contract the one is also a very bad, fast, a bad I polished, cost my five, it's about 4 kilometers. And that one have been almost 90% done. The same in the easy local government where I started two blind eyes in the same is the local government. Of course, this part which one is at where's the bridge and one is at the junction. And I want to tell you, sir, we will not ask you why I have the same easy local government. So that's why you can explain a lot of things on the internet. After being a governor, I'm not sure but I've never seen a good human coming to the government within two to three years or after my term, because I'm not going to have nobody for me. There will be so come to Abakar, the good government in the way not 33 kilometers have been completed from Chipo to Karikia down to somewhere. I said we compared, it's a very, very bad have been completed but they didn't achieve this of various assets of way. The same in Abakar, the good government we have behind this the same in the good government and a lot of people have been completed. The same in Abakar, the good government. In Abakar, the good government, this is where you are. So there's no projects scattered in this city and we are not executing it in the good government. So in the rural area, it's what you just mentioned. But there's so many other projects that I cannot remember that are in the good government. But I'm sure the commissioner for us is there. He reminds me of those that I can remember in Abakar, the good government. But I know that will get my vote to help their and pass the other bridge and show. So now, I will go to Muku, the good government. In Muku, we have 24 kilometers. The flat of 100 kilometers. I have said that it's a different place. Because what I told is 24 kilometers. When we started here, we began that 24 kilometers. We still have about 5 or something kilometers and the contractor does not have it. So I'm just an internist which doesn't look it and completely there. Now, the good government, that 2 kilometers has more of 20% and the contractor is on site 24%. But the good thing in this road will be is that we're screwed up to 10 kilometers we are dealing with a national that is not the good government. That's what the good government will have about 100 kilometers. That's a matter of 22 kilometers. But we screwed it to not this thing to encourage them because we don't want people to see us as people that see us there and waiting for their but this are facts. This are facts. This are facts. And it's practical. Now, still in the road infrastructure who come to dedication, who come to help you must give us your time because we refuse to go to the here. Because you must give us your time. So like when I tell you, I tell you that I am happy. Now, this is huge. We can see the reason because I have a man who is a president of this country who believe in babies of nationalists do their will as and that is why this government is ongoing. We can see that the one that's one of that and we are competing with other states for we are not making any progress because we are still looking for space. We are still looking for the best like what the House of Lords said we are not DJ India and not bad president as they show that bad president there has not just been vibration because president is a listen. If I am begging for DJ in here without mentioning that government. So when we come to the central, so we have the good government like we have in the water zone. And we have all these projects scattered in the local government. There is no good government in the central zone that we don't have outside outside the 20 kilometers but we don't have minimum of 20 kilometers from the water. You should be happy. There is enough to the water, so it's not worth it. We have designed to 24 kilometers and then it's finished. And 10 kilometers and 24 kilometers. So I have a government, I have a government. And when we come to the boat we have Mr. Speaker, he has lunch before that's 2 kilometers then we have the trip road as the Mr. Speaker's place in the boat. And we have my own marriage on the boat. We have 5 kilometers inside my end of shortage which we just awarded. They let me live in peace. So now, and so we know that we are going then go on there. Then in the south we have about 3 roads ongoing in the south. We go to and I can't remember the road off of that and I can't remember off but I know we have about 4 roads ongoing in the south. Certainly, in the south, we have what is on what is always 13 points, something kilometers. We have the one that took that to the corner, Magnera, in this place. And we have other roads ongoing to there. And that is it for the central. For the south we start from where my father came from. Because as I know from here, I had a friend who is now going to be a boss. Why did I say I had a friend? Because when we were in Bad State I was in the Bad State called Beni as an assistant secretary compared to the ex-officer. Now, the other good minister of the house was the chairman and we are friends at that particular point in time. And when the former governor in the chief that asked him to come and be his deputy I told him I went to my class for House of Lords which will let his wife was a better candidate to the House of Lords and I went to the House of Lords and that is how my success will be started. That is in a house we have no this chairman, the chairman of the government. We have a party that was small, we get 3 or 4 kilometers. We have another 15 kilometers to move that are going. Because like I said, we are very shocked that everything the government has had to 20 kilometers outside 20 kilometers. No matter the number of kilometers you have. And we are very much shocked that we can meet all this project in the first one, one of the people from any one country. And generally, we still we can not go out from that. Now, in a mission, I go back we have to be 20 kilometers and shoot road. We have 20 kilometers in a very precious place. I'm sorry. And in that people we have numerous roads that have been completed. So that is where my deputy governor is from. Almost all the roads in Africa have been completed. And if I find that this is a form of general practice, because I said my deputy governor listed all the roads and so we are wanting and I was saying it for 80% that they completed. Now, in the other local government those of Orono, that's the road of the Bad Chairman and so many others have spoken, that was about 30 kilometers. And so many others, as the governor go and pass it I said that it's me and it's China. It's me. Because what I can refer to that's no way I have the opportunity to comment there and I'm not for it. Now, how do we deliver say that children are going to be very sorry? Because we don't have family access and because God decided to punish your soul. Because those are children who say that that never a saint man in South and set almost some of them, perhaps some of them no difference is there. Every time they come by, they find out they can't fix. So what it means is that the leaders of this country are wanting to have one of the children of the law in a village that are schooling at the foundation that have been Because we guys, you know, when you don't have the office to teach, it's no possible. And that is why I said, telling against John. When we listen with, I show you we are scared. Community farmers, it's like a bad. And we are not hitting that child. We are singing. That is it. But today, it's very difficult. For me, I was there, I want children to stay in that country, it's very difficult. And that is why we have a very box, seeing those of our leaders. Having more office to be, I'm sure we are. Unless it's by imposition. Outside imposition, there's no more children that can celebrate. Now. Outside imposition. None of our children can celebrate. Because we didn't prepare to play. Because we are using. We are using the resources that we supposed to lose to build public education, to train them and grow our native as a leader. That is why they are coming back in Musa. And that is the reason why I said the most go back to the gas station. As I am talking to you. We are building twelve classrooms. You press all in fifty two primary school. And why I mention that? One, they live in my university. Two. Is that it's a shortage very much in front of us. But it's not a missing thing. That is why I said. We must get those that. Struggle to make the class, the children don't take what? If you go to the university, you find out that the children of the rich are not making the class. It's very difficult to see why. But the children of the world are gently making the class, which to accomplish a project and a result. And it's so yeah, when they get a company competing, if you see those are children, there are less moving. If you want to know more about the children that they do, visit Timor and us. That's when you know. I had opportunity. To study cycle the university. And I know many of the African children, African black children that are there. Anytime I come to see the master, it's open, I. I say this is nonsense, this is beyond. And that is why I hope children that want to, I must be there. There's nothing I can say about this, not nothing. They are sitting here. We are. Not. Because there's no way the real life will be there. So. That informed me. To put more interest in the organization. And what comes, thirty thousand. That's all. Thirty thousand. I said, that is about nine thousand, so you don't have. We said the top primary school. But that is much too much at all, that's why we talk about, that is the reason why we are doing that ice cream in the university. That's the reason. That is the reason you are talking, you see it's here. And that is for the community, because we do the same as the community by two twenty two percent. For forty two hundred and ninety nine. So I think that the people that were completed to have that debt. And are going. There are many come to the university. We have the challenge, we have been our information. And I said no. We must do this in a way that everybody will be proud of the boyuca. We must be known for something. Well, you know today. In Abakadi, yes. That is the dream of our fathers. But also, as you said, by the people, what have been shown to the world. Tell me that you are, leave me fine. What is that that is the objective, that mission? To counter those that are not parents, who say that not educated, they are not educated, they are not academic educated. These people are such as much to me. That's. And therefore, at least in the movement, we are different. And our fathers, for us, that are reading G T A. There's no movement, they are different. And it's such as the effort to, and it's fight G T A. And what it shows is that we are not doing well now in such. And that is why I said. I will get this. To be the main, my next partner. And we said, all these people are made for us. To accomplish our. They said to me, tell me, tell me, I must have had yet to do. And we said, we start to come back. I would first say, well, to a certain level, I'm not that bad, that's the reason we are here. Maybe I'm very bad, I'm dead. Today, with their master. They are receiving with their pay. People say we spend money and I have. Most spend money to get to what you are achieving. And what part of this money is, they make up. The quality research. That were getting to a better. That is what makes me happy, or people don't know. So now. These people have job opportunities. Because that's what we both applaud. You know, when you are dead. They will get one company in that blood. And that company will send you a mail. And they say, even if I can get a blood, they say, you may have said that I'm a bad man, but you are really seated. They first agree, they should love that we are moving. But then when they decide that. Who? Because I feel that when I do, I have to say, but we can't do that. And when you that, when I have a father, and I do that, my, 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 my. When you come to the spice, and the distance has created that. You find out that two thousand. Where the five hundred thousand, you can't go better than that. That's why I have that. That's what. That's why I have that. So there's another opportunity, this one, and people don't know. You may be speaking. And I said, I said on a committee, that visited the restaurant. And the restaurant brought this land from the sea. But I want to voice that he said, this is the last time to take out from this. Is anyone there, they are not there. And they said, it's waiting for me to take it off. We are not afraid. To take off, and let us have a place. It's part of my adventures. And I have a very. And we are ready to find everybody that is ready to find us. As I, as I talk us, and also for the talk of the.